Hi. I'm a federal agent to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please. Bike Man?
Present.
Oh, I slammed too hard. B Singer?
Present.
Boss?
Present.
Echis?
Present.
Fry?
Present.
Gross?
Present.
Schroller?
Present.
Trom?
Present.
We have a quorum? Sorry. I hit it too hard. Thank you. There are minutes from March 14th in your agenda packet. I would entertain a motion.
Move to approve the minutes of the March 14th, 2016 minutes.
Second.
Are there any amendments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aido? The next section is public comments. Anyone that would like to share that is not on the agenda may speak for a maximum of five minutes. You would give your name, word, and address, please.
Yeah, my name's Terry Hughes, the second ward. I was curious about the kid working his tail off trying to get the dog park thing set up. He's trying to collect some money from people to donate. And it looks to me like the figures got bumped around from the city was maybe gonna be stuck about 11 grand on this thing. And now it's up to almost 28,000. I wonder where all this inflated price came in on this unless we're in hourly ways to try to figure out how to get a grant or something. Because it should still be down around the 11. People feel a little better about donating to the Voice Gap that's trying to get that thing done.
Are you gonna address that, Rick? Okay. When he gets to the City Administrator section, he'll address that.
That'll be fine. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, Terry. Is there anyone else? Moving on to business and discussion items. First one up is Maria Seematter.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and Administrator. We're gearing up to open the pool for the summer 2016 season. And so listed before you is a proposal of employees that I would like to hire for the year. I conducted interviews over the last couple of weeks. And so I would like to entertain any questions that you may have.
I just wondered, you had three fourth-year guards listed. Did they not? And then you had third-year guards being assistant managers. Did your fourth-year guards not want to be assistant managers?
I had one that interviewed with the others. And I selected the other two based on the interviews and my thoughts.
And are you also hoping that they stay another year?
I am.
That's what I was kinda thinking.
Yeah, I hope that they do.
Okay. And I know you have Ricky Bike Man in charge of the concessions. And I'm sure you've communicated to her our desire to break even in that area.
Yes. And actually, she was a big reason that I think that we did a lot better last year. I kinda had given her a little bit more responsibility. Taxed her with the job of going to Walmart and keeping the inventory, you know, the way it needed to be. And running those inventory reports and trying to keep a hold on our inventory. And she did a fabulous job. And so I would like her to continue to do that. It's, you know, it takes a little bit off of me. And I think that we made great strides last year. So plan going forward is to, you know, do the same, hopefully improve a little more and come out ahead on that.
Okay. Now, I noticed on this list you have relatives of yours. And I know this council has addressed the nepotism policy, or at least discussed it in the past. So I put a copy of it on around the table. And it is, it's directly out of the personnel manual. And it's C-7. Does everyone have it? Okay. And so basically, it's saying, you know, that a supervisor can have an immediate family member report to them. Now, obviously, this is a seasonal position. So, and we also have one other situation in the street department. So my question to you guys is, our options are, one, just to get rid of it, to amend our personnel policies and pull C-7. Or we can say it does not pertain to seasonal employees, which would address this situation. Or we can say doesn't address, or that it doesn't apply to seasonal employees and pull out possibly where it says brothers or sisters-in-law. And then we would be in compliance from the street department as well. Did you hear my, understand my three options?
Could we change it to reference being under some other sort of review or approval? I mean, is that also an option?
No, because then it's discrimination, right, Rick?
Is that right?
You can't have it on a case-by-case basis.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think that's right for problems.
For problems down the line.
So we can either pull it totally. We could, for this situation, we could say it doesn't, is that it only applies to full-time employees. Or if we wanna address it for all our areas, we could modify it to say, only full-time employees. And then maybe pull some of, the problem is brothers and sisters-in-law, which is the second to the last line. Which we could delete that specifically. So...
If we were to excise it completely, would we, I mean, and there was a situation where maybe we observed some sort of favoritism or somebody observed it, would we have no way of going in and modifying it? I mean, do we really?
We can go back and address it through the council.
That's what I wondered. I mean, I don't want us to cut our legs off on it either. But I don't wanna, I don't wanna set us up for abuse, but I don't wanna set us up for a situation where we have a very obvious problem. And since we've deleted the policy, we can't address it. I wanna make sure we've got plenty of ways to address it should a problem arise.
Right. The nature of the employment's still the same, that will.
Right.
It doesn't necessarily avoid potential issues. But if they can't do their job, can't do their job. So, I mean, I think you've...
You know, we had a hard enough time trying to find good help the way it is, you know, just because it's a brother-in-law or something. To me, that doesn't, I mean, I'd move to make a motion to drop C-7 out of our code enforcement book.
Didn't we already vote on this like two meetings ago when we were talking about the water department?
Tabledunk, I think, didn't we?
I thought we discussed this.
We were going to discuss it further. Further discussions.
Be clear, the code allows, a motion for a resolution needs to happen by the council for personnel change to happen in the handbook. It's per your code, 1-401. So if a motion's gonna happen tonight in any way, shape, or form, it needs to be done by...
Have a resolution by next meeting.
And I'll get one drafted up.
Okay.
If it's voted on by council.
Mayor? In reference to the pool, because they handle cash and product, which is the same as cash, do we have any checks and balances in place?
We have point-of-sale on the inventory in the concession stand. And that's working, right?
Yeah, it's working very well. We do have point-of-sale now that tracks all of our purchases. And I'm working on the purchase order aspect of it, where I can enter a purchase order when I place my order. And then it can just be received in as another checks and balances. There was a little glitch last year and I didn't quite get it worked out. And so, and then we did weekly manual inventory counts. This Ricky coordinated that, where we did that. It was, I think it, I think it did a great thing all the way around with the admissions department and the concession stand.
As far as admissions, though, there's really not controls there, right?
Well, I mean, there's controls as far as what, you know, what our sign-in sheets say versus what we take in.
Oh, you do reconcile that every night?
Yeah.
You count it? Every night?
They do their count and we do ours. We do too.
Oh, okay. Great. It's more than I thought we had.
Yeah.
Okay.
I would second Kevin's motion.
To delete it totally? Any further discussion?
I think that's a mistake. This is a policy that was put into place by previous council members for a purpose. And I think when, when you take this out and you don't have a policy for it at all, I think that it leaves it to the council to make decisions. And as the mayor pointed out, puts it, gives us the position of making discriminatory decisions. If we don't have a policy, if we, if we take this policy away and we treat one family differently than we treat another, I think we're setting ourselves up for a lawsuit.
This is what I brought up last meeting is, if the police chief would happen to hire a son, and you know how hard it is to get police officers, that means you can't do it. Right?
Again, we could strike specific relationships that are, we think, more extreme than others.
I'm just stating a situation.
I, you know, and that's true. And I, I don't think Vicki's way off base at all. I mean, that's, that's a good point. By the same token, we haven't, I mean, I don't know that, I don't know the previous council's reasoning for putting this in was. Probably preventative. I'm not aware of it having been a problem. Could it be? Absolutely. There's always gonna be room for abuse in situations like this. But I also think that we need to trust our supervisors to make good decisions. And we, we, there's a reason we've entrusted these people to the positions they're in, and it's because they're competent. I mean, there's a reason we keep them there. It's because they're competent. And ultimately, I mean, I know, it may mean we have to make tough decisions. It may mean future councils have to make tough decisions. But I trust that we will make the right decisions. I trust that they will. And we'll just have to be careful. So I, I mean, that's my two cents.
What does our city attorney think on this subject?
Well, I mean, I've, I think given you the extent of my thoughts in how it needs to be done. I'm not going to give an opinion on whether it should be there or not. I can tell you that, you know, it's split in terms of, you know, I think what, it allows for it to be in there. And then there's also some review of it in case law and attorney general opinions that I've looked at with nepotism clauses. And, and so it really is kinda split on, it's okay to do either way. It really is. But I think you, as the city, depending on a number of variables, has to determine if it's appropriate for its situation. But it's not for me to, I mean, I'm not issuing a vote here. You're okay to do it either way, is what I'm saying legally speaking.
I think historically, as the pool goes, you've always had some degree of family working for family at the pool, since I can remember. And sometimes it's worked and sometimes it hasn't. This is working, so...
Yeah. Well, we, again, we have that option that we can make it, this is across the board, pulling it out. And if that doesn't pass, then we can always just do, address just seasonal as a second leg of it. So, are you guys ready to vote?
And the motion was to drop C-7?
To drop it, yes. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
So 6-2? All right. So based on that, we can go back to your list of employees. Did anyone else have any discussion about the employees that are listed, or the rates, or anything? I would entertain a motion then?
Move to approve the list of employment and wages proposed by Maria Seematter for seasonal employees at the swimming pool this year.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Present.
Seven, seven? And one abstaining. All right.
Okay.
Because of your wife. We're supposed to state the reason why we abstain, so, because of your wife.
And stepdaughter.
And stepdaughter, okay. Double reason then. All right. Thank you, Maria.
And just to give you an update, AHRS construction was down this week to install the door between the concession and the mission. It's not completely done. They still need to put the window in and adjust the lock a little bit, touch up some paint, but for the most part, it's there.
Does it look like it's gonna function well?
Even just the hole without the door was better than before. So, thank you.
Thank you. The next item is Jen Solocic with our insurance renewal.
Good evening. I believe you guys have the report with the pricing for the expiring premium compared to the renewal premium. And I just wanted to open it up, see if anybody had any questions. A couple of things that you can see that I did, I did give you guys an optional renewal quote for the property deductible. You currently have $2,500 deductible, and I gave you some pricing for a $5,000 deductible. And on the inland marine, which is your portable equipment, your tools and stuff that moves from job site to job site, you currently have a $500 deductible on that. And I also gave you a $1,000 option on that particular one. The property does have a little bit of an increase, but the overall values went up about $2 million. We wanted to make sure you guys were within the cost evaluations based on square footage, construction type with all the buildings. So that's where the increase came into there. The other one was the law enforcement liability. It does have a little bit of an increase, but that was due to a prior claim. So that pricing went up a little on that. The only other change that really happened is on the general liability. The deductible for any sewer backup was $1,000, and they have increased that to $2,500.
And that's in that $13,000 number?
That is correct.
So it was $1,000 in 2015 to 2016?
Yes.
And as you can see at the bottom, Debbie filled in that information down there to show you what's in the budget, budget for it. The library number actually is the pool number, the 4785. But the total that we have budgeted is almost $135,000. Debbie also is working with Jen to make sure our, all our equipment and all our trucks are exact. We're also trying to make sure all our boards are covered. Some of them were not listed, as well as making sure our city attorney and sort of prosecutor were, were covered. So that, that number, the 116, isn't probably a final number, but it's very close. So if you want to go ahead and proceed with that, we should probably make it up to $120,000 based on their final numbers so that, because it needs to become effective April 1st. Is that correct?
That is correct. And I also, oh, go ahead.
And you can go ahead and make these adjustments for autos and boards and stuff like that.
Absolutely.
And then Debbie can let us know what the final number is at a later date. But we could, we could approve maybe, you know, the EMC bid adjusted up to $120,000. But did you guys, do you have a preference, or you have any questions for Jen?
Jen, how many claims on the commercial property, how many claims have we actually had in the last year to two years?
We had one last year, which was water shop.
Yes. And that one was a large one. And prior to that, I can tell you, I think we had five.
We didn't have any the year before. And then we had a lightning strike two years ago and a lightning strike three years ago.
I just, I was looking at premiums of wash, depending upon whether you have a claim, I mean...
If you have two claims, you lose your benefit.
Actually, if you have two claims, yeah, you lose the benefit. So it's, it's kind of a wash.
So it just decides if you wanna take that, it's worth $4,000.
Yeah.
So you take the risk.
Yeah, 45, so...
And I also wanted to point out one more thing at the bottom. And you'll see the dividends. That comes back to the city if there has been loss-free. And not just based on you guys, on the city's overall through EMC. So you can see last year, you got a pretty good little chunk back. So that is another added bonus that EMC does do.
And we won't know that till May, is that right? So I was just looking through, does that sound right?
Yes.
We had a water, a lightning strike in 2013, and a lightning strike in 2012. And then wind and water damage in 2011. So, what do you guys think?
So does everybody wanna leave the deductibles where they are?
Well, that's my question.
Deal with the $5,000.
You think we should, for property? And take the risk?
Based on what we have in the past, of course.
It's a, it's a plus, I mean, unless you have three, three or more.
Unless you have three, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, it's, we haven't had that. So say a couple of grand at least a year, even if we have a claim, so...
And you can readjust it every year. So if all of a sudden in 16, 17, you have a really bad year and you go, oh, well, let's step back.
That was a mistake.
We could change it back.
So, do you wanna, if you wanna go with the bubbles, and do you wanna make a motion to change our deductible to that? And then we'll adjust to the number we should approve up to?
Yeah, I'd make a motion to approve the, the quota stated with, using the $5,000 deductible. And I guess the $1,000 deductible is also kind of a wash on the commercial inland marine, so I don't know if we wanna...
Yeah, that was only $300, so that...
Yeah.
But the property was substantial.
I would go with it. Maybe, so I'm in the motion, I'll say with the, leave the, the main, commercial inland marine the same and change the commercial property to $5,000.
Yeah. I second.
Is there any, so we'll make that change first, and then we'll make a, or did you, was your motion for the entire thing, that change?
Yeah, then to get, then to go ahead and get the final quote.
Yeah, so the final quote will probably be about, let's say, 116 with that adjustment. So do you wanna add that to your motion?
So the...
Up to 116.
Yeah, the 116 with adjustments.
Four thousand to...
Yes.
And are you okay with that, Vic?
I'm okay.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Aido? Okay. Thank you, Jen.
Perfect. Thank you.
And you'll let us know what the final number is, just so we have a number there? All right. Joey Cromer. Cromie. I was looking at Joey, that's what threw me off. Joey, you'll go by Joey instead of Joe?
Whatever's fine.
I was kinda caught on that Joey. All right.
Well, good evening.
Hi there.
Good evening.
Well, I am just looking at wanting to replace my sidewalk in front of the grocery store. It's just beaten up bad, curb guttering, everything. I understand, I hear that we're gonna be looking at the street possibly. So I'd like to get this done probably before that, I would guess. Kind of a couple of questions would just be if there's any other assistance out there for helping with something like this. If not, then just kind of forward to go along with the estimate. I don't know if everybody's got an estimate of what...
Yeah, in the packet. The estimate was dated 3/1/16.
Yes.
Now, this, I spoke with Rick, and this is, or I sent you an email. And Rick said, "We're removing the sidewalk for you." Is that correct? Is that what you told me?
I don't think that's spelled a clarinet. We do. I think inline was gonna take that out. But our share, as you can see there on page 12, is 865. That's our cost for the sidewalk. But are you asking the $2,500 for your city to pay the curb and gutter cost?
Correct.
That's what I thought.
Okay, so that curb and gutter, if we're gonna redo the street, we would, we had planned to do, redo the curb and gutter then. So are you willing to wait for us to do the curb and gutter with the street?
I'm willing to do anything. And since we've got an attorney here, we could probably just, we also have the same insurance company as the city does. And I know they've contacted me about, you know, getting this thing done last year already. They've actually raised my premiums for this year because of that. So I don't wanna wait too long before we have an accident and four, I'll probably end up getting, be the ones getting sued, so...
There's no guarantee of funding under a TA.
For our third street?
That's correct. And if you waited, it'd be two or three years before anything.
Would it cause any problems down the line if we were to do the curb and gutter now? I mean, it's not something that we're gonna have to tear out and redo if we do get funded. I don't...
We don't want to do that.
No. It would not cause any problems down the road.
Do we need to run the conduit or any of that stuff like we have in the other blocks while the sidewalk and the curb and gutter would be out? Or can that be run in the, under the brick? I mean, I don't wanna, basically, I wanna make sure we're ready.
Well, what's there now is actually under the...
Is it already there?
Mm-hmm. It's outside the toe of the gutter.
Were we gonna put any light in there or speakers or anything, or is that on the north side of the street?
Well, I think if a project's ever done, you'd propose to do that, but...
You're not...
The worst-case scenario would be you'd have to cut a section of curb and gutter to put a light behind the sidewalk.
To get into the hole.
Yeah.
Where's the light pool now there on there?
Where's the end of the block?
At the end of the block?
By the laundromat.
By the laundromat?
By the laundromat.
Is that the only one on that block till it took it?
I believe so. I don't think there's one up by the insurance company, so...
Just the one.
Yeah.
Okay. And I spoke with Rick about, on page 14, it specifically said that we're supposed to break out the material costs. But Rick, I guess you're saying double that 865 and that is the material cost?
That's what they're saying. This is how I read it, that the city's cost on the sidewalk is 865.
Which is half...
That's what I'm getting, yeah.
Which is half the material cost?
Should be the material cost, yeah, because we pay half, which includes, because this puts for the rebar, we pay for the rebar.
So I guess I would entertain a motion...
Half the rebar.
To approve the sidewalk assistance for the city's show to be 865?
You wanna break that out separate from the curb and gutter?
Yeah, I figured we'd do that first.
I move to approve the 865 for the sidewalk replacement.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Aido? Okay. Now we can discuss the curb and gutter. What would you guys like to do?
I have a question about the curb and gutter there. As a frequent shopper to Cromie's Market, when it rains, there's always puddles that stand there at the curb. And it's in the part where the brick is that falls below the curb. Is that gonna be corrected when we, I mean, I'm...
Not with the curb and gutter.
Well, I'm, what is the point in doing a curb and gutter there if we're not gonna correct that problem? It goes up over your foot when it's, and I'm worried about every little old lady like me who gets out of her car and can't get to the curb to shop there without stepping in that or stepping in ice when it becomes ice and slush. It's very dangerous.
And it's in the shadow of the building during winter.
Can I ask you, was your insurance company concerned about the sidewalk or the curb and gutter, or both?
Yes, both.
And so did you ask them specifically if you redid the sidewalk, if there'd be any gray show?
Oh, I'm sure there would, yes.
Was true or false that that brick was picked up and relayed at one point, wasn't it?
Probably eight, nine years ago.
Just four or five feet out from the toe of the gutter, yeah.
And it's already settled.
Settled by... And once it reaches the gutter, it doesn't flow anywhere, anyway. It sits there...
If the water gets into the gutter, it'll go, but...
It didn't very fast. It's pretty flat.
But then it still leaves a pond.
Right. It's still ponding there. Yeah, it doesn't flow very much now, man. There's no, there's no draw.
Well, you know, also, we can apply for that money as early as April, right? For the TA project for...
No, it's not even open yet. It won't open till this fall.
For 26?
Yeah, the program's not open. I inquired, program is not open. That was in capital letters, N-O-T, capitalized, not open. And no date set for when it would open up.
If we did fix the curb and gutter, we'll let your insurance company thing go, but what about the street? I mean...
As far as I know, that's no concern to them.
But if we did the curb and gutter, do we do the curb and gutter, I mean, is it a problem aligning it with the brick knowing that potentially we'd go and replace the brick later? I mean, do you put the curb back where it is now? Do you try to drop it?
Maintain the existing flow line. You drop it, it's not gonna go anywhere.
Can we improve the existing flow?
Not unless you drop the storm drain.
Which we could do that, too.
Where's the, the storm drain to the west?
Yeah, it's clear to the west. You could drop that storm drain down an inch or two, which would increase the flow.
That maybe would help quite a bit.
This would...
This doesn't, this estimate don't include any...
Right.
Well, I know, but I'm just saying if we drop it down a couple inches, then at least get a little more flow to the west.
In front of your building, though. It's not beyond the...
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think so.
The laundromat.
Right.
And beyond the laundromat is where the, the storm drain is.
Correct.
So if we did all of that, it would increase those. So...
I just know to do the curb and the gutter now is not gonna correct the problem of the water standing in the street in front of that, in front of there.
No, but the broken pieces of curb out in front that you step up on might eliminate the chance of twisting your ankle or breaking an ankle.
That's right, Bill.
Well, can we throw down some cold mix in the puddles?
No.
Why not?
Because those puddles are sometimes this big, and then you step over an inch and they're this big. There isn't, there is not a parking spot...
If you have to cold mix the whole street.
Yeah. Yeah, there's not a parking spot that you can that you can fill in cold mix and make it and make it workable.
It'll shale off and cause other issues.
Yeah, because it has to be so thin that.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we can't relay the bricks just in the I know. You have to come 10 foot out the whole length of in front of his place.
And there are.
And then your eight-year solution again, I mean, at best, because it's been I mean, is it worse than when you purchased the market?
The sidewalk and curb has been deteriorating more. I mean, the street, I don't think it's gotten any worse of course.
I'm sure the salt having assaulted during the winter probably doesn't help too much either because it tries to eat back wherever it came.
Yeah, that we try and use just the water softener salt, which I've been told is very unharful at all, so.
Can just the curb be patched?
You can't patch that.
You can't patch that the way it's broke off.
I have to replace it.
Is there a motion?
This, okay, so this would be this 2,500 would cover all your storefronts. Does it include the driveway to your parking lot?
No, I just had him start like right on the right on the other side of that.
Right where it kind of comes up to.
Exactly, right on the west side of there.
And there's a tree grate and all that in there. Would this be removing that?
Yeah, I just told him remove that.
And your posts for your awning are also in that concrete, but I'm assuming the posts would go back or.
Yeah, yeah.
Well. You really can't do much with the curb because of because of the flow line. I mean, you'd have to if we replaced it in front of his place, I mean, we really need to take it on another, what, 50 feet, Joe, in front of the laundromat or is it further than that?
Because there's a lot. There's a laundromat, too.
That if, you know.
Yeah, somewhere.
That or less.
Yeah, 50 foot. I mean, it needs to go on west so we can drop that storm sewer or catch basin down so we can actually get the water into it once it gets to the curb.
Right, because otherwise we're.
That would be on us. What he's asking for is help here.
No, but he wants us to do this. He wants us to do the curb and gutter.
Yeah.
The other, we're just going to do the 855.
I think we should find out what it would take to do it all the way down to the storm drain and then drop it. What, you said an inch and a half?
Inch and a half or two inches.
I mean, I think otherwise we're spending money that really doesn't make sense. But if we do that, then maybe we're solving more of a problem. So who would you look at what it costs?
You want to get an estimate to redo the storm.
Drop the storm sewer, catch basin, two inches.
Take it all the way to the edge?
And then go from whatever line you've chosen there, clear to the catch basin to the corner.
We'll get that for us, Rick. Are you okay with us bringing it to the next meeting?
No, I'm okay with that, yeah. I just know.
You got half.
I just know that like, you know, replacing not replacing the curb and guttering will allow them not to even want to touch my sidewalk because it'll.
Right.
Frost getting underneath it'll buckle it, ruin it.
How quickly were they wanting to jump on the sidewalk? How quickly were you wanting to jump on the sidewalk?
Three years ago.
The flip side of it is he's saying it's destroying by us not doing it is destroying what he's investing in it, which he's investing 45, 4855.
Right.
Minus 865, so.
Be a little patient with us and we'll make it even better than you expect.
I can imagine.
So we will have an estimate at the next meeting. If you want to come and and share some more, that would be great.
Okay.
Okay?
I would appreciate it.
Because I don't think, you know, just doing your section of curb's not going to solve the problem getting the water.
Right.
Clear to the end.
Right.
Okay, so the next meeting is April 11.
Okay.
All right, so we'll see you then.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
And you can go ahead and throw that to Joe so he can see it in advance. All right, Marvin Turner?
First thing I'd like to do is welcome our new city attorney to Black Squirrel City.
Thank you.
We're a one-horse town.
Little mini squirrel town.
Mark Turner out of 1110 Jenkins. That's in Ward, too. Following up on what you were talking about about Joe's problems, my suggestion would be have the city street department, I think Mr. Gundle figured probably figured something out on how to get rid of the puddles in front of that. If we ever get rain, maybe he could mark out where the puddles are and then raise the bricks because I've seen him do great work taking bricks out and putting them back and they do very good job instead of having a contractor come in. I know they're busy all the time, but maybe they can fix one puddle at a time and get the bricks up where the water runs down along the curb and guttering. I'm not quite sure where to start here. I wore my cap because I'd been inconsiderate. I think every time I looked at my cheat sheet, I probably blinded somebody, but it's okay. I think I'll keep it on. Military, if we were supposed to take them off, I'm not in the military anymore. Okay. I tried to come to the meeting 17th, but I was told by Mr. Shane that it was contractor and KDOT only. So I called a fellow, Sabathia Mark Correllowitz or something like that. And he told me the same thing. It was just KDOT and contractor. But I see there were 28 people attended, so it must be a big contractor. Okay, I know I'm beating a dead horse to death, but on the 20th GI project, you know, I was here at the 22nd December meeting. We weren't allowed to speak. I kind of wondered how much time the body politic had time to look over the bid sheet since it was like 20, 21 pages or whatever. On the new sewer, I know there were a couple fellows here, maybe the January one of the January meetings that discussed about the FEMA situation down industrial park, tension, foyer and all that. I was wondering with this new sewer project, how is that going to impact that area down there since you're going to be sending water in a different direction than you have before? There have never been storm sewers up in that area. My understanding they'll dump in between KDOT and Sonic.
That's where it's currently draining, isn't it?
Just wondering now.
Yeah.
Been over the years.
So it's currently draining. It's just not an underground storm sewer, correct?
Just.
I'm guessing a lot of it goes east down to the Country Club Lake and a lot of it goes west.
It's not going to. This isn't going to change much of the flow.
It's going to be more direct.
It'll still break at 20.
That's your opinion. Okay, thank you.
No, sir, that's based on examining the plans.
Oh, you're a hydrologist. Okay.
No, sir, I'm not.
Okay. I only have 15 minutes. I'd appreciate you just don't give any more comments.
Can I can I interrupt? Is there something that you want us to vote upon?
No, I don't. I just like to point out that has that properly been vetted as far as how that's going to impact industrial park down there? Has FEMA ever contacted about how the sewer project's going to work with them?
I just think that I think the engineers told us that it wasn't going to change the flow of the storm sewer water, so.
What engineers were those? Swab Eaton?
He doesn't want me to comment, so I'll wait till he's done.
That's fine.
Well, so anyway, going back to this, so in in this business and discussion items area, it's really stuff that we can vote on that we that it's something we take action on? Is there something you want us to take action on?
I'm just trying to give some information to anyone that's interested. We'll go from there. On this total bid on that I got through the Coma or the Cora people, you know, common excavation was 1,062 cubic yards, rock excavation, 810 cubic yards. You're putting in a sidewalk was 466 square yards, which if you figure in five-foot sidewalks, about 860 feet with a ramp, and that was 39,000. Currently, there are no sidewalks in that area. Then when you add up all the curb and guttering, 3,027 feet, 714 square yards of six-inch concrete, eight inch concrete, 800 square yards aggregate base, six inches, that's 4,193 square yards. You total that all, that's 229,784. And I was told at one time that the sewer project was going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of, I think it was around 96,000, I was told. So that's little difference. I won't even go into the asphalt deal. That's, I don't know, total of 308,627. I'm guessing that maybe that's that nine-inch reduction in the hill, which I've never quite been able to understand. Traffic control, I assume that's the lights to handle the two-way traffic through a one-lane road, 41,000. Traffic signals, cheapest part. When you add up the radar detection, traffic signals only 160,000. Under Cora, if anyone wants that bid sheet for $3, they can get that. It's 21 pages or so. Slippery slope, that's referring to the beautification project. I talked to Smithy's over at Axle today about people voluntarily relinquishing their yard art, such as an old tractor, old car pickup, whatever. And driving around Dog and I, we saw quite a bit of yard art. Didn't even have to go too far to see it. But he said basically your larger cars, which probably back in the 70s and 80s, probably $100, $150 because the market's down. I already knew that because my U.S. Steel stock's not doing very well. But on Joe's sidewalk, I mean, 800 and something dollars, I guess it's great. But when you spend $40,000 for sidewalks that aren't going to be walked on near as much as his sidewalks are, looks to me like the city could afford to pay the whole works on it's that 800 and something but dollars. I'm getting close on time. I've got eight minutes. Suggestions, while I was driving around, eastbound home Broadway at 13th Street, you have a yield sign. Count all the cars parked for the courthouse, I assume. Visibility is very poor. You have to pull way out into the intersection before you can see a northbound vehicle.
We discussed that. That's the intersection that we were always complaining because they parked that county vehicle there.
Well, to me, it'd be very easy to move the yield signs to 13th instead of Broadway. Broadway seems like more of a through street than 13th anyway.
But then you want 13th to empty out because it's a half block from the highway. I think that's the reason why.
Because the police department or the sheriff's.
Sheriff's Department. And because of football traffic, I think was the other thought they had.
Yeah, but when the sheriff's department wants to go someplace fast to their lights and siren on, I think people stay out of their way. I think that's probably state law. Supposed to pull to the right and stop. Another intersection I use quite a bit, 8th and Jenkins, northbound traffic, there's a dead spot in there. You can't see a car coming up that hill. I mean, if you're not in any hurry, you just sit there and wait until you think somebody's out of that dead spot. So that might be a really good place for nine-inch reduction in that hillside, maybe even a traffic signal there. The other thing, since I'm thinking a lot of people be using North Street when this project starts, that you might want to kick the speed up past that church from the church to 11th Road, maybe to 40, 45 mile an hour. I mean, I think that's might be fairly normal speed right now. I mean, they're moving right along. Other thing, I hate to beat a dead horse on this one, too. Part of you were here when I appeared twice over my sewer bill. And I figured out $221.09 that I was overcharged. There was never any action on that. I mean, I think about four of you might have been here when I came in front of the council. And I don't want the money. But the last time I was here, I said I would match you up to $300, dollar for dollar for money to the food pantry. That's that's one of my favorite charities because I can't stand that people might be going hungry and going to bed that way. That's very good charity.
Last year, so that's kind of water under the bridge.
Well, it was actually 2013 when I appeared.
Oh, okay.
Is that statute of limitations? Then we don't have that?
Well, that we've already that, you know, we have we're in a new budget year, so we wouldn't want to go back and.
Well, I'll just go ahead and give my share and leave it in your ballpark. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks for the city attorney being here, too.
Thanks, Marv.
Hey, Mayor. I'm sorry. I have to ask. You tried to bring the point. What is the the purpose of this this section of the agenda? Is it discussion items or is it public comment?
No, it's supposed to be something that we need to vote upon, a discussion item that the council will vote upon.
Then I think we need to I think we need to enforce that.
Okay, so when someone wants to come in, if it's not an item to be voted upon, it needs to be addressed in public comments?
I think it needs to be addressed in public comment, which has the five minute limit.
When they want to get on the business and discussion items section, do you ask specifically then? I mean, how do you determine? Do you ask specifically what the potential presentation's going to be? I mean, how specific do you need to be?
But I would say that generally it has a specific topic. There's a specific question to be answered whether it has an attachment or not.
Just going just going forward, you just ask people what if there's something to be voted upon?
Since I have about five minutes left and you're discussing that, I'll tell you right now, you won't see me at this council again unless there's a life and death situation if we can't come up here and share stuff with you.
Well, I think the question is that's what public comments is supposed to be for, to share feelings, concerns, things like that. But the business and discussion items section, which is the 15-minute section, is when we have an issue to be voted upon.
You have something specific to ask that you want us to do and you had never asked a question.
I've never seen it defined that way. That's something new. I've been this was should have been chapter seven. I was here at the last eight meetings, but the one one of them in January, I chose not to speak. Then I started scheduling so that I could have 15 minutes. Last time I ran out of time, must have had half of a cheat sheet left.
But you notice like on items one, two, and three, we all there was all action to be taken and we made a vote on a decision. And and that's what this section is. And going down five through eight are the same situation where there'll be probably be a motion to do take some action. So that's the difference between the two sections.
Well, that's something I never heard of. This was the seventh time out of eight that I've appeared and mostly over the 20th Street project, which Mr. E. Kiss says is a very dangerous intersection, which I avoid. Once there's a stoplight, I'm sure I'll use it because I can go Jenkins to 20th right to the stoplight instead of going 14th to the stoplight. But I didn't realize that we had to have something that had to be voted on.
Yeah, yeah. And see, most of the people give us pages of information so we can review what the topic is before the meeting, so we can go over it. Like Maria presented what her salary request was and Jen showed what her bid was for the the insurance.
Okay, in other words, you don't want anybody to come over and make any comments unless you're in that five-minute section.
Public comment section.
Okay, then that's fine. But I doubt if I'll come back and make any public comments. I might make some private ones, but I'll try not to slander anybody.
Madam Mayor?
Yes. I did hear him say a couple of points and one was about the 45 mile an hour speed limit he was saying out on North Street when we take out 20th Street and traffic will be they'll they're on their own, they will reroute there, even though we're going to do one lane at a time and keep that section of highway open.
Yeah.
I think his his concern was the backup at that point. And we had addressed that that road. In fact, I think we lowered the speed limit because so many people use that bike lane and they use the jogging lane out there. I'm talking about where more goes out towards toward the cemetery.
We didn't. We didn't lower it. We just didn't raise it.
We left it the same.
We left alone.
Was that what it was?
Yeah.
Is it 30?
Yeah.
It's 30. But I I think that's.
Well, 30 is the residential speed zone.
Okay.
And and we consider that still residential.
Okay.
Just like from North Street to Highway 36 on 11th Road is 30 as well.
And another thing I heard Marvin say was a suggestion that a city crew, instead of taking all the brick street out in front of Cromies and that whole area to to make that repair, brick up to the curbing, to have city workers, because they have the knowledge to do it, to take out the sections that dip down this far below the curb.
But I heard the point was when I thought when Joe was up there that we we just kind of discussed that and said you'd have to take 10 feet of bricks out all across the line.
I asked that question because I it would make sense to do that, but it sounds like it's a major, major project, unfortunately.
Well, we'll get a bid for this other and see how what that looks like. Okay, the next item is on page 21. It's Steve Goonkop here. You have a letter requesting a key for the dump. I when I read this, my concern that are I just wanted to request that they only that's only used for work done in Marysville because they're located in Seneca and we and we have to pay our dump employees to work the dump. So I'm okay with them using it for Marysville work, but I certainly don't want them to use it for anyone else.
Marysville city or Marysville general vicinity. I mean, they're working up the road.
I know, but it's just kind of an honor thing and just have to and just request that because like let's say they walk work in Washington and they drive through Marysville and dump it all and go home. I mean, you just don't want a situation like that.
How many keys are there out there?
Right now, there are two.
There are only two for trash, I mean, for limbs?
We rekeyed.
Besides our employees.
Right.
Our two companies, which you've approved of both.
So but those are both local guys where this this one is from Seneca and that was my only concern.
I think they do quite a bit of work around here. I've seen their trucks around. I've seen their trucks around.
Yeah, they do. But I just thought if we give them a key, we would just make that stipulation.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, in writing.
All right, I move to approve we give Guttenkopf Tree Service a key to the dump.
With the?
With the understanding that they use it for Marysville purposes.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aideau? You'll make sure they communicate that time. Okay, the next item is the resolution on page 22. I did speak with Dave and he said that the freezer has been removed. So he did meet the two-week guideline and then the other one is the vehicle within four weeks. And I didn't talk to Dave this afternoon, but he said that that was vehicle was moved. Did he say anything?
It's not moved.
It was there yesterday.
I say it's still there.
Okay, so he's got two more weeks on that. But anyway, what we need to do is approve the resolution that's on page 22.
Move to approve resolution number 2016-03. Where Mayor to sign?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aideau? And the biking across Kansas, is there something you want to share, Debbie?
I was going to ask for a free pool day on June 8th, Wednesday, when the bikers will be coming in, and also for the Kestner House Museum. Bike Across Kansas has suggested just putting donation jars out. Typically, that's how they handle it in other cities and it would be a good.
PR move in hopes that they would try to visit very slowly.
To try to monitor the difference between citizens and bikers is going to be too tough.
And you might have a pretty good-sized crowd if it's hot weather.
It could be crazy, actually.
Very, very popular.
Yeah.
So. Madam Mayor?
Being the devil's advocate, I just want to say we spend a lot of money trying to bring people to Marysville to use our facilities, and then we open the facilities up for free. We don't end up making any money having them come to town.
Well, it's just one day.
Here's the devil's advocates, devil's advocate. They will probably dump tens of thousands of dollars in town while they're here. It's that big of a thing, you'd be amazed. 1,200 people, they eat two meals. I mean, if each person spends 20 bucks, do the math, I mean, it's, you'll get more in bed.
She said the donation jars get pretty full.
I don't know about every, I know Oskaloosa did it a couple of years ago over their pool, and I think they made a couple thousand dollars. I don't know what we charge in admission, let's just walk up to the gate rate, but I doubt we're going to make thousands of dollars.
Maria's coming in?
Yeah.
$4?
$4. So, I mean.
I think if you put a free will donation, I think it'll be fine.
It's sometimes the best way to get it, and it's good way.
And we, on a couple of these events that we have, a church or some organization puts on free dinner for them. So there's another meal that our restaurants are giving.
Those are fundraisers.
These are during the BAK, as far as I'm aware, there's lots of people wanting to sell meals. It'll be youth groups and other nonprofits, and I don't know if the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts are going to try to do some stuff. There'll be plenty of food options, and as far as I'm aware, they're all being paid for, because everybody knows it's kind of a goldmine moment, so. It's, I mean, like I said, it's not a small thing, it's tens of thousands of dollars.
I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to make a free pool day for the Bike Across Kansas.
And the Kestner House Museum?
I, I'm sorry, and the Kestner House Museum.
With a free will offering?
With a free will offering.
With free will offering, thank you.
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aideau? And the hangar leases are on your desk. These will be filled out for each specific hanger. It's for three years. It was drafted by our city attorney. It shows the current year would be at 19 cents per square foot, the next year would be at 23 cents per square foot, and the third year would be 27 cents per square foot.
I move that the building, the airport lease, these be approved and signed by the mayor.
Second. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Root? Opposed? Aideau? Thank you very much.
The timeline of this, I understand, needs to happen ASAP.
Right.
Because of the term of the last lease. So if the council want me to input, I have the names of all the owners of the hangars so that each lease is obviously applicable to the individuals with square footage. I have that information, too. Debbie's given that to me.
Or do you want to do that, Debbie?
Or Debbie can. I certainly don't need to, but time is of the essence.
You can do it?
And I'll send a cover letter out so they know about the change.
Okay. She'll take care of it.
Her plane space to square footage now.
All right. All right, I am not aware of any notices in hearings. The next item.
Madam Mayor, there is going to be a zoning board of appeals meeting on April 14th at 5:00. And this concerns the increase of the lot coverage to 34%, and it's located at 711 North 17th Street.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anything else I need to speak and communicate? All right, we'll move ahead to the consent agenda.
Move to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Uh, yes. I just had some things I wanted to mention. Convention and tourism are requesting $5,587 to be spent on advertising. And if everybody look at page 27, number six, the, there's a request, and this particular one concerns the annual Mother's Day market. They're requesting a banner, money to be spent on a banner. And then they're also saying that they'd like to add tourism material to the vendor packets, which is something new this year. And the logo will be used in the paper advertising, and it's currently on the flyer, is already being circulated. And on the next page, it shows the flyer, but since we're Black Squirrel City, I really, it's my opinion that we should show the black squirrel. Don't know what, how the rest of the council feels, and especially since we're going to be having black squirrels on parade.
There was a request for a banner to go out.
Right, and then these advertising flyers, too. Flyers and then the tourism material. Do we get to approve those materials before they go out? Because I'm in agreement with Darlene. This logo that we paid, what, $26,000 to research, the council never did approve this. This is something that the Chamber of Commerce chose to use, but we never did say, take the horse and rider off. We never did say, stop promoting the black squirrel. But more and more, those signs, those emblems of Marysville are being used less and less to promote Marysville. And like, look at this, page 28. Do you see the squirrel? No?
No, I can't read this stuff.
It's a pretty fuzzy copy. I mean, I agree. No, I'm not in love with the volleyball logo either, but on the other hand, I mean, we, these people, we've given them the power to make these decisions, and I'd like to see more squirrel, too, but if they think that's not as good of a marketing move, I don't think we should necessarily second-guess them on it.
Well, I think the main thing, I think Darlene's trying to say is, if you would like them to, we need to communicate to them. She represented, she took my place at the meeting, the last meeting, because I was unable to attend, but before, I guess she wanted to make sure the consensus of council, and I, me as well, that you want us to say something like that, or if you're happy, just going with that logo on everything.
Right, can we suggest, or, and I don't, how does the rest of the council feel?
I don't like their logo, so.
So what we, I guess what we can say is.
It looks like the gas, the gas companies.
Kansas Gas, yeah, and there's a couple other cities. I think Winfield or one of those towns has that same logo in different colors on their water tower.
I've seen it too.
I wonder if they paid $26,000, too.
So we should go back to the committee and just ask them if they can incorporate when it's easy and appropriate, the black squirrel. Is that what you're wanting us to be doing?
Yes, that and the pony rider.
We don't, we don't want our traditional symbols to be diminished.
To be diminished.
So we can, we can communicate that back. And just say it's a consensus of council. I guess I felt like I shouldn't say anything on behalf of council, and Darlene asked me the same question, and I said, well, I guess we need to get council approval whether or not to convey that back to them. So we can convey that back to them.
But we might also want to make sure they don't think we're micromanaging them either. I mean, just that's our opinion, and then we understand it's their decision. That way you don't feel like, they don't feel like they're being disenfranchised.
If you're going to promote Marysville, and these are the symbols that have always said Marysville, then I think they should be used for the first thing that you send out that the people see about this event and the money we're spending to make these black squirrels and put them all over town. I think we should, I think we should tie it all together.
Yeah, I thought the banner that's going to Lakeview especially, it'll be out there only for the summer, and we're trying to promote black squirrels, especially this summer, and it's a one-year banner. To try to incorporate that would be nice, but as long, as long as we know that the consensus of councils that communicate that to the Travel and Tourism Committee, that's all that is mapped, right? So we will communicate that. Is there anything else? Anyone else have anything on the consent agenda? All right, we had a motion on the second, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aideau? The next item is the appropriations ordinance.
I don't think we ever vote on, I'm sorry.
Move to approve the appropriation ordinance number 3623. Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye. Oh, I'm sorry. Roll call?
Beckman?
Yes.
Beesinger?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
E. Kiss?
Yes.
Frye?
David.
Gross?
Yes.
Schroller?
Yes.
Throm?
Yes.
All right, don't want to take your dump, Debbie. Okay, Rick, you're up.
Madam Mayor, first item, you can see there is a dog park and, and, over here, too. Working on this, and if you guys are aware of it, but it's about 72 pages long. Been working on it as much time as I can get. I asked Nathan to bring the information he brought in, and the fence estimate was $10,000 from Roche fencing. That's for 794 feet, five-foot tall chain link fence with the gates, service gates and wall gates. And then he brought in on one sheet of paper that evidently he had had an email to put the concrete mow strip underneath. The fence was $11,250 for 786 linear feet of that, 10 to 12 inches wide. And so, because there are other provisions that have to meet on the federal grant program, has to be ADA accessible. So I estimated that it would take about $5,000 to do ADA sidewalk access ramps and have a concrete or some kind of a paved surface for one or two, a pad, because it's going to be based on the scaling here and the areas to park right there on the corner of the parking lot to the, to the east of the site. It's going to take about 150-plus feet of a five-foot wide sidewalk to get there. And then estimated $650 for water service, and then two pet stations. Got to have pets, you got to have pet stations. And complete stations, good complete stations with the sign, the post, the bag dispenser and the trash can are about six, about 620-some dollars. So $150, you add those up, it's $28,150.
You know that, that mow strip, for $11,000, were we initially thinking we would put that in, the city would put that in?
I thought it was $2,000 or $3,000, though.
I can look at those costs and do that down.
I thought that was only a couple $3,000 for the mow strip.
But still, you're still going to be upwards of $20,000.
I never thought that was a good idea.
So the alternative is not to put the mow strip around it and just.
Could you rock it and spray it annually, or is that just completely out there?
Sure, you can do that. It's more, just more labor, but yeah, you can do that.
I mean, how long do you have to spray it? We can't use diesel.
You can use a stirrer.
Yeah.
If you use roundup, you're going to be doing it two or three times a year.
I know Dale said that we could go with a different type of fencing to reduce the cost. He said the fencing that they have up at Beatrice isn't a chain link, it's some other type of fencing.
I don't know what they got.
He said it was a cheaper fencing up there than a chain link. He would just recommended that. So what do you guys want to do about this?
I would use rock instead of concrete, first of all.
Can I, it feels like this was originally, so it's, it was originally a Boy Scout project that's now turned into a city project. And I, and I'm not, Nathan's not here to defend the project, and I'm not debating the benefits of a dog park, but it just feels like it's turned, what I think of, so personally, when I think of a Boy Scout project, I think of the bridges out of Alcoa Springs where all the materials are donated and the Boy Scouts do the work, or whatever group does the work, and this just seems like it's turned into a much bigger, and has been, have the city administrator spend hours filling out a 90, 76-page grant form.
Well, that's the instruction.
I know, I know, but I'm just, but I looked at the form and that was, it's very extensive, and having filled out those, they take a lot of time.
Well, I noticed that when you look at the criteria, though, if it said, you know, is it highly likely you get 10 points, if it's unlikely, it's zero. And there was quite a few criteria points that a dog park would qualify for. So just going based on that, I was like, well, it looks like we could qualify for it. We could certainly scale the dog park down. If we take the $10,000 out, we could bring it back down to, what, $14,000, which we expected it to be 12.
Yeah, that's what I thought. It was a $12,000 project, and he was going to take care of half of it, and we was going to pay $2,000 for the concrete underneath the fence.
Yeah, and Beatrice. Beatrice is, it looks like it's like woven wire with wooden posts, and they do just spray on the fence because it's, the grass is dead and it's dripping around the fence, so they didn't bother doing the ground and all that, too. Groundwork, concrete.
So what kind of fence is it?
It's like a woven wire fence.
Woven wire.
Maybe embedded.
Two by four?
Yeah.
Well, if you take out the cement, we'd get it back down to, you have to add the rock.
It gets it to about 17.
17?
Yeah, roughly 18. That'll be expensive for rock.
How many, pardon me, how many dog stations did you say needed? Six?
Two.
Two, okay.
That size, you're going to need one at each end, probably.
And maybe we need to start thinking about putting something in place because, Brad, the little, the little lunch area or the little picnic area down at the lake, past lakeside, when you go down the lake, that was done by a scout as well. And when they come to us, it almost makes us look like bad people if we refuse to, you know, our part for a scout, but I think maybe we need to put something in place that says, here's the limit to what the city is going to pay. You know, because when the kids have worked so hard and they've brought their, they've, they've found a project and they've worked it out before they bring it to us, they've done a lot of work to get shot down when they stand here. So we need to tell them, or we need to maybe say, here's the limit to what the city will, will contribute.
Well, I think we presented it that way in this place.
Yes, we did.
Yeah, but we've never sought a grant for a Boy Scout project.
Well, we've never said no, either.
We've never, never sought a grant for a Boy Scout project. That has nothing to do with saying no. We've never sought a grant to help out the Boy Scouts. They've done it on their own with volunteer labor and donations.
Well, I don't think we can retract.[1741.54] We've already told Nathan we're going to proceed with this project.
We told him we would help him. We didn't say we was going to do it all.
I called.
I understand that. I was just saying, we started this conversation with him six or seven months ago. So, you know, he's already in it for six or seven months. And as far as this grant, you know, when I looked at, when I read through the application, it was talking, it sounded like, you know, you needed a five-year plan. And when I read through it, this is kind of like the perfect grant for us to use for the failed field, restrooms and press box. And so if we, you know, in a five-year plan show that that's something that we would potentially do, not this summer, but next summer, and then potentially the lighting, it seems like it qualifies for this grant as well. So I was just thinking, this is just kind of starting to get the process ready for us to apply for those bigger grants that are probably down the road that would qualify as well.
I'm sorry.
Let's see, I called and talked to the ladies down there at the park. They have never funded one of these. Yes, it's eligible, but they've never funded one and it probably won't rank high.
Well, they've never had a request for one, right?
That's kind of my understanding that they haven't, but yet, they can't say it wouldn't be funded, but they can't say it would. So just.
But we also have to change the ordinance to even apply for the grant. We have to change the ordinance around pets at the.
Well, if we have the, after we get the grant.
Then we have to change it. We can get, we can apply for the grant.
We don't have to change it before, yeah.
No, I would understand.
And we could also always have this ordinance that's, can't we put up signs that say no pets beyond this point? So that that keeps them up in the dog park area? I mean, can't we put a sign there?
Well, they're prohibited right now from being on.
Yeah, but you go down there and there are dogs down there. I tell you that. I've been down there.
So anyway, are you guys just okay? Rick's supposed to bring it to us next meeting, the application. So are you guys okay proceeding without the cement? Do we need to make a motion to that effect or just consensus?
You gotta use some cement for the post.
Excuse me?
You gotta use some cement for the post.
I think that's included in the fence bid.
Okay. So we'll proceed at that level and see what happens.
Yeah, I'll just scratch it off.
Okay. And we'll wait and see if we get, we'll deal with, we'll, the ordinance after we see how we progress.
Yeah, I plan to try to have the draft of it for next meeting.
Okay.
If I can get it all done.
All right, thank you. But just since I brought this up, Kevin, I don't know if you've looked at that grant, but the application, but it specifically talks about recreational facilities and updating them. So if you want to read through it and see what you think for failed field?
Yeah.
Okay.
Then on the street projects, I was eager to go back and pull off those asphalt projects we talked last time that the city could do and rank those in order of priority. And these ones here on page 49 are the ones probably could get accomplished this year. Estimated cost is about $26,000 roughly.
Did you guys read the email that I sent to Rick and Rick responded about the 11th Road? He said he doesn't have a bid yet back on the microseal. And about 11th Road South, I thought when we were on council that we agreed to go ahead and get engineering done for the 11th Road South, but he said it was just a master plan and not specific enough for that.
It showed the alignment and potential grade. And any piece of that then could be pulled off and you could say, you know, go from the edge of the concrete down to say the senior center entrance and you could do that. And then you could go down to the bottom of the hill next time and then you could go to, you know, you could do it three or four different phases. It's just the alignment's there, it's known, but what was provided are not construction documents.
But I think we need to go ahead and direct Rick to get CES to do plans so we can actually bid that out, that 11th Road. How do you guys feel about that?
Well, how much are you talking about? And it would be a proposal to do the design.
Yeah, from where the cement ends.
All the way to Keystone?
To Keystone, yeah.
I don't know if you want to bite that much off with one shot.
No, unless you're going to issue debt, you're not going to be able to.
Yeah, well, we talked about, we have a half a million dollars in the sales tax fund.
And.
Potentially that we can spend.
To go to Keystone, are you going to go asphalt or are you going to go concrete?
Asphalt. Aren't we going to go asphalt?
And they're probably going to be pushing $400,000.
Well, we can at least get a bid.
Yeah. Well, you're not going to get a bid until you design it.
So the key thing is, this is my point. When he was, when Gary gave us that list of asphalt projects, there were three major ones that he said he doesn't have the equipment to do.
Right.
So we have to start a strategy of attacking at least one of these each year or Keystone is already beat up and then we just did it last year. I mean, we have to kind of get, start, bite the bullet and do some of these street projects.
That master plan is just a master plan. It's not anything a contractor can use to bid.
Right. And I think you pointed that out when we paid to have it done. I think you actually pointed it out.
I did. So we have to, remember, we have to pay for that. And I'm not so sure if any of our grants or anything we get ever covers CES, ever covers engineering.
I don't know.
So if we want to look at going forward, we basically have to go up for what, RFP?
Well, CES did a master plan. I would suggest you stay in there. You'd have to have a proposal to do the design work, probably just like we've done on, like we've got here tonight, on one of these from CES about preliminary engineering, which is the design. And then probably you could incorporate a CE agreement, but you could wait until after the bid to do that. So all really it would be needing to be a proposal to do the design.
I think we at least have to.
Like I said, we need to design it, you know, just because we design it doesn't mean we have to do it all the same year.
And then we can, we can ask them what they think it's going to cost and then we can decide, or if we're going to get debt next year, we can build it into it.
And there's no shelf life on the design?
Generally not. I mean, you know, other few things might change over a period of time, but no.
The other thing is, remember that whole drainage issue? They kept saying it's not until we get the road correctly built, well, is the drainage going to work? So we have all that money invested in the drainage and it's not going to work until we do the road.
Right.
So.
And Inline did get the ditch done last week.
Oh, yay.
They greated the ditch last week.
So do you want to, somebody want to propose?
This is just to get the proposal of a cost to do the engineering.
That's what it would be.
Madam Mayor, when you're talking about getting a proposal for cost for the engineering, are you talking about in segments? You're not talking about an engineering that's going to do that whole section, right?
That's what needs to be done.
It has to be done, that entire, and why would it be such a piecemeal? I think we should just price it out and see what it is and see if we can bite the bullet.
We're just not agreeing to, we're just seeing what it's going to.
Okay, so you're going to do the engineering in one bite?
Yes.
And then the work is actually going to be done, what, in three years, a third?
Along with that, along with that design, there should be an engineer's estimate, which would allow you then to make a decision as to whether or not to proceed.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not exact, it's just, it's an estimate, you know, at a point in time to say, if we did it today, this is what we could expect.
Rick, do you have any idea what the cost would be for the study?
The engineering?
No.
I mean, we're talking about thousands?
Five figures. But low, five figures probably.
Eighty thousand?
Because, well, I think, I don't think it would be anywhere near what it would be if nothing had been done, because a lot of the preliminary work was done with the master plan. So basically this is taking it from where they left off with the master plan and developing, you know, maybe a little bit field work again, you know, to incorporate changes with the ditch, whatever there, anything that's changed and then developing the construction plan. So I don't see it being real expensive.
But that's over the, so I guess I'm, they're saying, are we required to go to bid for something that, or not for engineering?
Not for engineering, but once we get the engineering estimate, we would have to go to bid.
For the construction, yes.
I mean, we can make the motion, do RFPs for engineering services or we could just go with CES because they've already done the master plan.
Yeah.
It's your calls. So would someone entertain a motion?
I move we stay with CES for the proposal and.
Get the proposal and the estimate?
And the estimate.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Funding, well, funding probably from the sales tax fund, right?
That's the only place we can go.
Thank you for pointing that out. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayo? Okay. And I guess everybody's okay with the list that Gary presented?
I don't know why we have to do the police station. I don't like the alleys being ahead of some of the streets. Yeah. They done that alley not too long ago, patched in there quite a bit a year ago or so.
We can scratch some of these alleys, not going to be a problem. Not going to hurt anybody's feelings.
On the police station alleys, weren't they looking to cut, change the, yeah, change the way?
Change the pitch of it.
Change the whole pitch, yeah.
Yes, because if it rocks like this, it's more, get it to level out.
They want to dig, pretty well cut it out and dig it down some.
Yes.
Yeah, but I think the streets are needing more work.
So are you saying on this list that you want to do the streets first?
I think so.
Number one is a street. That's good street.
So you want to do all three streets before they do any alleys?
Any street before alleys, yeah, I would think.
So you want them to scrap the alleys totally?
No, not totally scrapped. I'm saying there's more streets to be done than alleys. And then if they got more time, they could go do the alleys.
Okay, so we have three streets.
Four streets, basically. Number five is kind of an alley approach.
An alley approach?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have three streets.
No, no, I'm sorry.
Two alleys.
Number three.
That's, that little, in, it's a dead end.
Yeah.
That's why it's low in authority.
Stub.
So are you saying you want to do number one, then number five, then two, three, four? That's what you want? So you need to give that to Gary, that's what the council wants?
That's what you guys want.
And I asked you about that crack ceiling and I thought the reason why Gary said we needed to do it was not because we already have cracks, but to prevent cracks.
Three's not.
And then what the new cement that we, the new concrete that we just put down.
It is not a problem.
So you emailed back to say you have to see the size of the crack and I thought the purpose of those three locations was to seal it before the cracking began.
But the contractors bid according to their measurements on the cracks. So I could say one price, but it may not be what a contractor would bid. And that Hall Brothers quote was within a dollar and a half to $6, depending on the size of the crack. So, you know, when you find out what the crack seal would be on those concrete, those three concrete streets that we've done would be actually with a bid.
Okay. So do you want to wait and see what this 11th Road comes out first before we proceed with the crack seal or you want to go ahead and get a bid on the crack seal?
Just to clarify, I did when we went to that first, when I first joined the council, went to the League of Case Municipalities Committee. I went to the session on crack ceiling. And it is, as my understanding is, there is cracks that you're trying to seal before they get larger. So, but there are different sizes and the size does depend on the equipment that needs, is required to seal those cracks. And we can buy the equipment or we can hire it, but it is more that.
Gary said we do not have the equipment to do that.
Right, right. It's very specialized, yeah, so.
So what do you want to do about the crack ceiling?
I think we need to get it done.
Yeah.
Before we lose any more streets.
So go ahead and bid those three that he recommended? Okay, so you'll do that, Rick?
Yeah, let's see, Gary made Tony say, threw up an economic way to get some crack sealing bids.
Okay. Madam Mayor?
Yes? On this, number three?
We haven't gone there yet.
You have asphalt work?
Asphalt work.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're on, I thought you meant flush tanks, I'm sorry. Number three, I'm sorry.
Calhoun North to the alley, that is a street. That's not an alley.
Yes, it is, it's a street.
Okay. So the order is number one, number five, and then number three.
Right.
Then number two and number four, okay?
I don't think number four really needs done.
[laughing].
You don't want more traffic in your alley?
I don't think number four needs done.
Why is there so much traffic?
It'd be a waste of money.
Why is there so much traffic in that alley anyway? Because of the church?
Because people cannot, for the life of them, take, find it within themselves to drive another half a block to go around.
They're avoiding the schools.
They've got to go another, they can't go another half block. They might beat one car if they cut that alley, save themselves 10 seconds, they've got to get home to watch whatever.
So you think four needs to be scratched?
Yeah, I think it needs to be scratched. I think they did a lot of patching on it, what, a year ago? And it's significantly better than it was.
Good.
And I think if you make it look like a highway, people will treat it like a highway. Honestly, I'm amazed there hasn't been a wreck, people hit that end on that.
We can scratch it if you guys want to.
I don't want any kind of favoritism since the council person I hear lives on that alley.
Such is yourself. Okay, well, we just saved, we saved a little bit of money there.
$3,000.
We'll just scratch it, there's probably another one somewhere.
Yeah.
There's probably somebody that wants theirs paid.
Let them have it.
Okay.
Only flush tanks have revised a proposal from CES. Current proposal estimates $4,200 for a lump sum for design, $1,900 lump sum for bidding services, and an hourly rate of 120 for any inspection services. And generally those haven't been a lot, have been pretty reasonable. And to recap last year's agreement, the proposal was $3,600 designed, not to exceed $1,500 on bidding and between $500 and $1,500 on inspection. We paid a total of $3,600, $1,170 and $20250 respectively for 49, 7250 for the total. Also discussed with Tony and Rob, including Dennis Mason's driveway in the program, some additional work would need to be done on that. And there should be a map on here, yeah, on page 54, it looks like. There's a map of what he proposes to do there and it needs to be taken care of. But anyway, that would be in a supplemental agreement for another $1,500 design for, to get that manual out of Dennis Mason's driveway. I'd just recommend just proving both agreements, authorize them, and sign.
Move to approve both agreements and authorize them and sign.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayo? Now, we need, we never did vote on that the last meeting to proceed with the flush tank project. Do we need to do that at this time?
Well, by doing this, you're pretty much doing it.
We approved the engineering, but remember last meeting, we didn't really discuss proceeding with it. So is it, the general consensus of councils to proceed with the flush tank project, correct?
Yep.
Just so it's documented in the minutes? Okay, all right.
And then if you remember, maybe a few meetings ago, a question came up about school zone signage along Center Street. So I emailed Mark down at KDOT. He discussed it with his folks in Topeka. And his proposal was brought up last week about what they proposed to do. I think there's two options, there's an A and a B. He just wants to know, and there is the text of his email message. In option A, the crossing for 14th has an S1-DS1, that's just a number of a sign, but no WBS1-DS1. And you can see what those numbers are. And looking at option B, the S1-DS1 to be installed, shown there, 14th should be installed at least 150 feet prior to the intersection of 14th. So that would put it somewhere right in front of Nordis Motors office is where that sign would go on the north side of Center. Regarding who's responsible for signs and markings, city's responsible for obtaining and installing all the signs, the numbers there. General, city's responsible for installation of all devices, signs, markings. Markings are needed, KDOT can purchase and provide, but the city installs. If the city chooses option B, KDOT can purchase and provide the S1-DS1, but it might be easier if city obtain the signs to keep sign orders straight. Let us know what option the city chooses. Crosswalk markings are needed, provided by KDOT, city wants KDOT to purchase and provide. And I think he's talking about tape, not paint. But if you're going to do the clink, I wouldn't, I wouldn't waste KDOT's money or the city's money. Paint down, that's going to be gone in a year, so.
Right.
Because we repaint.
And we paint yearly anyway.
Yeah, so, I don't think we want to.
When we do go back after the clink, will it be just the standard paint that wears so fast?
No, it'll be tape.
Okay.
Thermoplastic.
Good.
Thermoplastic, see, there's thermoplastic paint and thermoplastic tape. This was thermoplastic paint, and it's exceeded the life of what they told us it would last. They told us three to five years, and we've had more than that.
There's a lot of traffic against it.
Yeah. Except it's worn where the attorney movements are.
Yeah, right.
Straight through, it's pretty good.
Okay, so do you guys have a preference if you want to proceed with getting these signs up?
Which one? I need to know if it's A or B.
It's the next, to find out what the cost, how much the signs, or do we already know what the signs are?
They're in that.
I told you that. Option A is about $625.50, option B's about $835.60.
I may, we go to option A for $625.50.
Why do you prefer A over B?
Yeah.
Is there a reason you prefer A to B? I'm sorry, we're in discussion.
Option A.
I'll second it.
Okay, discussion.
Discussion?
Okay.
Why do you think we should do option A instead of B?
Just less cost.
Isn't the, isn't the option B, doesn't that give us an extra sign?
Well, they're saying that the sign isn't necessary because there's a stoplight there. That's the reason for saying it's optional, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think so many people overlook those signs there. I think they're looking down to 10th Street for to see when that light's going to change.
I think they're looking down at their front texting.
Yeah, that they are.
More to.
But I think any, any sign that we can put up that help those kids get across the street, it's an extra sign to catch someone's attention.
Now, that sign, that's 14th Street, you know?
Yeah, I see it, yeah.
Okay.
14th, because they got the light.
The 14th is where the light is.
They got the walk light, yeah.
So the option is to add signs there, where the stoplight is at 14th. Okay, we have a first motion with a second. All in favor with A, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Five, three, that's what I got. All right, we will go with option A, and go ahead and purchases.
Yeah, I'm only fine. KDOT will, ordering signs, make sure we're good. And then there's an updated project list. Next one, next month, I'll add the flush tanks and manhole rehab. I think I've got one more to add, so.
Hartley Ridge.
Hartley Ridge, since we're starting to see some expense on that, so I'll put those in there. Other item, not on the agenda, you know, we don't like doing this, but on the water shop addition, there's a, there's a bid from Waikie and Sons in front of you. And it was brought to my attention by Kent, it thinks originally when HRS had proposed to do this, that they had included at least one of these that was above the shop area, even though it wasn't specified in the written bid, and the bid that Waikie used was the exact same bid that had been prepared by HRS. And so, there's two pages of pictures, and there are red arrows. The red arrows on the first page are showing, you can see there's a little area up there, and this is the middle photo at the top, that's taken from the west side of the shop, and that's basically the north wall of that higher addition on there. And that is really the wall, pretty much in question, that should have been and wasn't, or he said, she said. And then there's other views of it, two views of it below there, and then the two on the left, in the middle and bottom, that's on the opposite side of the building, and you have to view those from Elm Street. But it's basically another piece of the same tin, this would be the remaining tin, old tin that is replaced. And then if you look on that second page, on those arrows, they're all pointing to the same area, just higher views, lower views. There's a door there, that door's not even accessible from the inside, it's walled up. So replacing the tin on this, the wall, the door would disappear. And would go all the way up to that roof. And the quote for that's $3,975.
So the whole building would have glided, so you'd have the red building, you'd have the red building, and then the new tan building. It's just picking up the areas that didn't get included in the bid before.
So all the tin would be the same color.
Yeah.
And not three different colors.
Yeah, there's three different colors right now. So I want to entertain a motion.
Is there anything on the color that it's a problem?
The door.
Well, the door, I mean.
The door needs to disappear.
But it's all rusty, okay.
Ken indicated that that upper one was really one of the places where water had come in in the past.
Especially there on the west side.
Yeah.
The one there in the middle picture?
Yeah.
That in there where it leaps down there.
It's great for me.
Yeah. Looks like I watched it rip through.
Move to approve the Waikie and Sons labor material bid for $3,975 for work on the south side and south on the roof of the water building.
Is any further discussion? All in favor?
Yes, excuse me, Madam Mayor. On this bid, it says work guaranteed. What is the guarantee? I don't see any attached.
It would be the same as the original. I think there was one year, if I recall.
A year?
Yeah. It would be the same guarantee.
Labor material?
As the original.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussions? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? You know?
And one other item, one on here. There's a water line easement that is related to the Hartley Ridge project, actually it's for the water line service. And this is an easement for a very small piece that only has 375 square feet more or less. And you can see on the third page, the map, this is a, an easement that would be granted by Mr. and Mrs. Hughes for the city, and this is basically where the fire hydrant would go. They had requested to put it on the east side of the driveway, so. City Attorney prepared this easement, we've made one change, and it's restricted only for water and no other utilities. Tony felt it'd be, it's appropriately, it really is only needed for the water, for the water.
Do you want to address the council?
Sure, since it's your property. I don't know anything about this.
Have you not discussed with the Hugheses?
Had Tony not talked with, with your husband about this?
No, well, okay, let me recheck. Which I'm Karen Hughes, I don't know if you need me to say that, but we, he had initially contacted us, and then he had mentioned that, but we contacted him back and said that we preferred not to do that, and he said, okay. So this is, we have not, we have, I don't know anything about this. I'm just telling you.
It's not a story I had, but if that's okay, I mean, we can just forget it, so.
Well, that was our last communication, was that he was not going to do anything, he was going to put it inside the easement, you know, where the easement is, north of the easement line.
Just, just not to just.
I mean, I'm not saying that we wouldn't agree with this, but I'm not, we don't know any, I don't know anything about this.
Should do, and the first thing is for them to be okay with it before we discuss, move on it, right?
Yeah.
So it'd have to be presented to them first?
Yeah, then, sorry.
Okay, so we'll let you review it, and if you agreed to it, then we'll approve it.
We had not agreed to it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Wow.
All right, is that all for you, Rick?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, then one thing I, we did have that meeting with the BG consultants.
Yeah, BG.
And they, they, they were going to follow up regarding that asset access management plan, that I guess they are sometimes contracted to do that, so I just wanted to let you know that they are going to look and see if they're going to possibly open up a program. And the other thing is, I have talked to Chief Ackerman about USDA development grant for some of the information, some of the tasers, I think, that he wanted, or was it his capital plan? Has he talked to you about that?
Not recently, that I've, may have.
Okay, but.
Not since that meeting that I've.
Okay, well, I know that, so you might want to talk to him about that, because he's thinking that he wants to have that done this year, so. All right. Debbie, do you have anything? All right.
I want to make a comment, Mayor. I like Debbie's report about the, the spring conference that she presented.
Thank you, Debbie.
Well, then, do you have any suggestions of, for many of these items, of something we should be starting in Marysville?
It just takes a little bit of time to review the information and see how it will work with us.
So feel free to bring it to our attention, if there's something. Feel free to step forward.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Kelly.
Thanks, Kelly. All right, the first, on streets? Anything on streets?
The highway, we know, we're obviously doing the clink thing, we obviously know it needs help. That section in front of St. Greg's on Center, it patched, and it pops out, patched, and it pops out. Is there any way we can put a, a big ugly cold mix patch on that to get by? I mean, I.
That's what we'll set, we've got cold mix in now, so.
It does really, it does really well when they patch it, but it seems like they can't, I mean.
It doesn't take very long.
Because it's little sections, it's all cracked up, and it, and I just noticed today, a new hole, I think, appeared this weekend. It just amazes me how quickly we've.
At the meeting, I asked BG consultants if our, the condition of our city was like worse, middle, or, you know, pretty good in comparison to clink that they do, because they do a lot of clink projects. And they said, we're kind of right in the middle, so by the time we do it, we'll probably be on the low end. Anything else on the street? Water and sewer?
Do you know when they were going to pour the concrete up there at 20th? I think they've been, they've done a lot of work on it, 20th and North, I should say. The curb and gutter.
The rain, they've got to get destroyed when it filled it.
They're going to have to redig it.
They went to put back the dirt back in there.
It was soft to the bottom.
It'll have to settle for some time.
Okay, that's why I didn't know how long they.
It was filled with water.
People ask me about it all the time, because they see it.
It'll be a while.
Yeah.
I'm going to put a date on, but it'll be a while, because more rain coming, and it's just going to have to settle.
Is this, a street can actually do the work on that?
Yeah, we're going to increase the radius.
Okay, parks and rec?
Coming along on the restrooms up at Lakeview, the partitions are back, and all the self-flushers are all installed, and we've started some women's restroom.
Good, good. Just in time for ball season, they were out there today.
Up there tonight, yeah.
Yeah, good thing, good thing, good timing. Cemetery and airport, the only thing I had on that, actually, this would probably be more parks, but I am requesting that the Cemetery and Parks Board meet with the Tree Board regarding trees that need to be taken out of City Park. So if we could set that up, Debbie, and have them coordinate and have a plan for taking care of ill trees in City Park. All right, anything else?
Airport, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I, we had someone request a hangar space. Have we accommodated those people?
Have we heard from the people that don't have airplanes?
We got, we got, I think we got the.
Last one today.
Final, last one today.
And so, is there going to be space?
Some of them will have to move out.
Well.
There's two.
Just got to, just got to call both parties and.
There's two parties that don't have airplanes, is that the answer?
Looks like, it appears there's only maybe one.
One hangar at this time?
How long are those people going to wait to, I mean, do they know they've got a space coming to them, or are they going to, has anybody communicated with them?
Just got the letter today.
What letter?
From, from the last hangar.
Hangar person, hangar lease person.
The people wanting to come in are the people who have to vacate, so the people wanting to come in can have a hangar space. Because it's been a month since they've made their request for a hangar space. Is someone communicating with them?
Yes, I am, but I just got the final letter today noting what space might be available. So I've got to talk with both parties and see. There's a meeting of minds somewhere, yeah.
Not that they'd be interested.
Because the party requesting it, mayor, found something already else.
Not that they'd be necessarily interested in it, but there's room for at least a hangar or two along the current taxiways up there. Do we have provisions in place if somebody came in and wanted to build a hangar?
Yes, we'd have worked with the FAA on that.
I wondered about that. Just because there is technically room for it. I mean, that'd be great, if somebody wanted to do that.
That'd be real nice, getting a nice new hangar in there.
Okay, well, you can.
Well, yeah.
Touch base with those two people and call them and say, ask them if they want to build a new hangar? Okay.
Kind of jump back to park, kind of about the trees in the park. We had talked, I think, two meetings or three meetings ago about what we had talked about in the fall, as far as judicious pruning of the trees along the trail. Have we gotten anywhere on that, you know?
I don't know, I have some turn, turn the trails on 7th Street.
Because some of those trees are, you know, they're kind of scrubby, and they have to be pruned up the bottoms so that they grow to the correct shape.
They know how to do it.
Okay. I didn't know if they'd done it, I had been down.
They're trying to get some growth on them before they.
Right, and I, my understanding is, certain times of year.
I think we're on that timeline.
That's what I was going to say, I think early, super early spring is one of the times we should, goes to look at it, so.
So you can ask Dale about that, see what he's doing. Okay, police and fire, we have a wellness report requested by Denny, and we held off.
I, I want to know how many of our policemen are foretaking in this? It doesn't say anything about, is all of them foretaking in this, or is one and do it?
They're all required to go at least seven times. Some of them go more than seven times, some of them only go six.
But the one they go over the seven, they're on their own time, right?
No, the way it's set up, and the way it's set up is, we pay for them to go seven times, and anything else is free from Marysville.
Yeah, but are we paying them on the city time to go to them?
As many times as they want?
Right.
And they go, probably, don't, isn't that the way it's set up, Denny? Yeah. So they can go as many times as they want while they're on duty, that's how it's set up.
Well, they'd only go once while they're on duty.
Yeah, I don't think they can go more than once a shift.
No.
I don't think they can.
There would only be one time per shift, if they do it. Some of them choose to do it when they're off shift.
Yeah, but I've kind of talked to you about that, I mean, a lot of it, if they're there their whole shift, he's going to question them near doing their job.
Yeah, but are they going so much a week, or are they waiting until the end of the month and then going seven days in a row?
I bet, I don't know.
Well, I did do a little.
It didn't say anything about any of that type of stuff.
Yeah, there's some people that are doing it throughout the week, and then there's some that go at the very end.
And you can, you can kind of see, I go to the gym, so I see the sign up sheet, because I sign on, you can see the names.
You could go down there and look at the list.
Yeah, I don't, I think Pam would let you look at it too, but you can tell who goes, because there's some people who are going four, five times a week, and they're probably getting the most benefit out of it.
They got a separate list.
I did this, I know you're, my graph, I have different officers, officers and how they attended it. And you can tell that some attended pretty evenly, and then you have some that attended at the end of the week.
Right.
And it just, at the month, end of the month. But I did, I did list the current policy on, on your desk, that G11 is what's in the personnel guidelines. And that's what we offer to all employees. And the, and the police are the only ones that have, aren't an exception to this. But basically, every full-time employee, and if you have elected officials, firefighters, and reserve police officers, if you sign up, then as long as you go seven times, the city pays for the entire membership. But if you do not go seven times, for each time you do not go, you have to pay five, you have to reimburse the city $5. So if you.
And health, health center.
You pay the health center? Well, and we do pay, like, if they go six, we pay for 30, and they pay one for five. Okay, sorry about that. So that is what is offered to everyone other than the police department. So, um, that is what is offered to everyone other than the Police Department. So, um, that, this, this wellness program, uh, began in February 2012 and, uh, they did, first did the six months and then after that, they approved to do it for a year and then, uh, which would bring it to, uh, like, October of 2013 and nothing's been addressed since 2013. Just to give you an FYI. And, um, you know, that she lists things and, so the total weight loss for the group would be for about the four years. And then she shows that of the 79, one person has lost 62. So the remaining seven or eight officers have lost the, of course, they don't say it's about a weight loss program, they say it's a wellness program. But, um, anyway, I, uh, that's where we're at on that. So I felt like we can either continue the program as it is, we can modify the program in some way, or we can, uh, make the, have them roll back and be like all the other employees in accordance to G-11 in our personnel manual. So.
Oh, yeah, maybe we keep it the same.
Is that your motion?
That's a motion, yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, you know, one note on that, Nick, you said it's a wellness program, not necessarily a weight loss program. Um, there's a lot of truth to that. A lot of athletes, during the season, they actually put on weight, but they're faster and stronger and in better shape. I'm not saying these are all obviously professional athletes or anything, but there's a lot to that. I mean, I personally have experience with, you can keep within a couple pounds and then be twice as fast. It's just, it's amazing that, and then Pam kind of alludes to that here, that there's a lot of improvement to be had without actually losing pounds. Um, and, you know, I know it's a mixed bag. There's plenty of people who think it's a, a waste of, of money and time and I get that. Um, but by the same token, it's also alluded to in here, even the positives I've heard were as much about the fact that officers being in bed cheap as it's them being at the gym and talking to people. I've seen people go up and ask questions and talk to officers while they're working out, that, not that they couldn't have otherwise, but frankly, when somebody's out of uniform and they're doing the same thing you are, they're, you know, a little more approachable. I think there's probably some benefit to be gained there as well.
Well, I don't think we'd ever, they, according to all the other employees, I mean, we're encouraging them to go and willing to pay their membership and we would hope that the officers would continue to go, knowing that we would pay them. The only difference is that all the other employees, we don't let them do it on company time. We say you have to exercise on your personal time. And I don't know if that, we, there's, you know, um, we have a, we have a situation where they're scheduled overtime hours. So they're the only, uh, department that has scheduled overtime hours. And not only that, but we also give them the opportunity to exercise on duty. So it's kind of like a oxymoron.
Well, but there's, you know, but again, and I think we've probably kicked it around a lot, that police officers are a little bit of a unique employee. There's a reason we treat them in almost their own little column versus other city employees. It's awfully hard for Rick to fill out grants while running on a treadmill. But if your job is to be ready for something, to be, you know, you know, able to go and, and solve a problem, to, you know, put out a metaphorical fire, you can do that a lot easier if you're an officer. Plus, no offense, Rick doesn't need to be in as good a shape because he's probably not gonna have to wrestle anybody to the ground to get his grants approved.
I don't know.
Although we wish he'd try harder.
I think, you know, that for them to be able to do it on time, I mean, if we said, "Okay, we're gonna make this available to everybody," I mean, you can imagine, Rick gets stressed out, "I'm gonna go walk on the treadmill for a while because I'm stressed about doing this budget and I'll be back in an hour." That just, the rest of the city wouldn't function.
See, this is, this is, I look at it as continuing education, even if it's physical education. It's part of their job. They need to be better at it. Yeah, we wish they'd do it on their own time and for their own reasons, but we need them to do it on whatever time for our reasons. I mean, it benefits them, it benefits us. I, I, I understand, you, it, it doesn't seem equal, but, you know, they can eat meals on their time. Not everybody can do that. They hit the clock out, they can't take their lunch. Well, we, we don't expect officers to not eat while they're on duty. It's just, it's a different kind of job, that's the way I look at it. It's my personal opinion.
Does the Police Department have any kind of a fitness measurement fit for duty? No.
Nope. We've, and, we've talked about that. When I first got on council, that was something I think kind of got discussed. The problem with that is, we have a tough time finding officers. The more impediments we throw up to finding qualified officers, then the tougher time we'll have, unless we want to pay a premium, which is tough too.
Well, I've never been for this program to be done on, on the city's time. Um, and I think that the program's not being used effectively when, uh, someone who uses it doesn't use it all month. And if they don't use it at least seven times, then they have to pay. And some of them wait all the way to the end and then they'll go seven times in a row. And the only reason they're doing that is so that they don't have to pay for it, that the city will still pay for those sessions. Now, it's not effective that way.
It's not as effective.
Well, it's not effective that way.
It's not as effective.
It's not effective that way. And I think it shouldn't be done on city time, uh, because we're having trouble with overtime in that department. And, uh, as long as we're having trouble and, and the officers are at the gym, you know, if they can't get, if there's work to be done that can't be gotten done because they don't have enough hours in the day and they're spending, and they're not gonna get in and out of the gym in an hour if they're changing clothes, securing their weapons, and then, uh, doing their exercise, cleaning back up and getting back out on the street. So I think we're losing time that our officers could be on the beat, on the street and not in the gym.
But, okay, I wish Chief Ackerman were, were here to reiterate some of the points he's made before, which are always seem to be good ones. But the reason they have overtime isn't because there isn't enough time, it's just because of the way their schedule is structured and because of the way they're required to be in court and things like that.
In part, I agree.
And as far as on the beat, I mean, I don't see this being much different than an officer being, you know, anywhere else. I mean, do we want them always active on the patrol? Well, we want them on patrol, but do we want them sitting on an intersection and there's been problems? Well, yeah, but we don't just do it.
Maybe they could do bike patrol.
It's gotta be a good mix.
Bike patrol, that is.
Then they do, there is a, there is a police bike.
There was.
Or was a police bike.
They don't have it anymore.
It's not down anymore.
I thought they sold it on surplus.
I didn't see that.
Long time ago.
I could have wanted it, but-
I remember seeing Officer Anderson out, uh, knocking doors, pulling handles. And I haven't seen another officer do that and I've been back here 10 years now. He's the only officer I've ever seen do that. In fact, I stopped to ask him, did he need some help for something? Because he was on foot. It was so unusual to see him. Glad to see that. But he was getting exercise, he was checking the doors, he was visible, people could see him out there.
And not to just be contrarian, yes, it doesn't do as much good if they go seven times in seven days in the fourth week of a month, but it's still a measurable benefit versus not going at all.
Okay, well, why, why don't we go ahead and bid, bid? Why don't we go ahead and vote on the motion that's made and then if we need to alter the motion, we'll see what happens. Okay, so all in favor of keeping it at as, as it is for one-year time, Keith?
Can I, before we go to vote, can we add to that, to review it? Since this hasn't been reviewed for three years, I would think we should review, I mean, didn't we originally structure this so we looked at it on an annual basis?
Every year we were supposed to.
But we haven't looked at it in three years. So, can we, I mean, would you consider adding to your motion that we look at it come March of 2017? Just so that way we've got a-
Okay.
I know.
Second amendment?
Yeah.
Okay.
Don't put words in your mouth or anything.
All right. All in favor of keeping it the same for the next year, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay.
Can we encourage, can we encourage them to, instead of wait, whoever's doing it waiting till the end of the month to-
Can I have a hands raised, who voted no? So it was 6-2, okay.
I think you want the Police and Fire Committee to, to kind of, at our next meeting, discuss that and talk to Chief Ackerman about maybe strategies to encourage that. That seemed reasonable.
All right. Anything else on, uh, Police and Fire? Admin and Finance? Um, I'm not aware of any appointments for wage terminations. City Attorney, do you have anything?
I do not.
All right. I am aware that we do, uh, need to go into executive session.
I'll make a motion that we go into executive session for percent to non-elected personnel exceptions, KS number 75-4319, to review city administrator candidates. The executive session will include the Mayor and City Attorney for 15 minutes. We'll take a three-minute break and we'll do the executive session at 9 o'clock and come back in session at 9:15.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You done? Well, you will. You went through that. Well done. I called this meeting back to order, to the regular session, and there was no action taken during executive session. Moving on to roundtable, I only have one item and that was, um, Joni Spillmeyer has requested that I read a proclamation on behalf of the city to spotlight the importance of national service and to those who serve. Um, this is related to the Corporation of National and Community Service, which is a federal umbrella that RSVP operates under. It's a way to acknowledge their service to our community. Their mission is to improve lives, strengthen communities, and foster civic encouragement. So I just wanted to make sure that you were okay with me proceeding with this proclamation on behalf of the city. Yes?
Please do.
Okay, thank you very much. Keith?
Yeah, on Dave's list, I, I seen that there was a problem with the tree. I just, if the tree is on, on, on somebody's property and the tree branch is hanging over somebody else's property and rubbing against a house, well, can I actually cut just that limb off or do I have to notify the person that actually owns the tree? I mean, what's, what's the-
You asking me for tree, tree law advice?
Well, I just-
I can look into it, I mean, I don't-
What, what, I, I asked him, I'm secondhand and I'm not an attorney and I'm not giving legal advice, but I was told by an attorney once, the section that crosses the boundary over your property becomes your property. You can cut it along the property line. So let him look into it. That's what I, my understanding.
Okay, that's what, I mean, you don't have to notify the, hey, the owner of that tree saying, "I'm gonna cut that limb that's hanging over my property."
Might be a good neighbor.
Go ask him anyway.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
That's my mistake. I'd have to confirm it though. Uh, I mean, if we're, but, we're doing anything unless it's necessary.
Yeah, okay.
I did, I just, I just saw that on here and I wasn't for sure how, how that'll work.
They might want to cut it right at the collar and do it right, so, you know, it'd be nice to tell them.
Okay, that's all I got.
So you want to find out from us whether or not we can trim that tree?
Well, no, they're trimming it.
It's already done.
It's a, it's a civil matter, too.
Oh, it's already been, okay.
I tell the individual to talk to his own attorney.
Okay.
See what he wants to do.
We can do that. Anything else, Keith? Bill?
Nothing.
Darlene?
Um, the city website, uh, who maintains that?
Scott.
Scott does. Um, have you ever talked about putting links to like travel and tourism, the museums, Chamber of Commerce, those types of things?
We can discuss it at a lunchroom.
Yeah, I'm trying to think, what is the, for right heading? Do you remember, is it, do you remember what the-
New Town.
Is it a town? Is there one New Town on the right? And does it reference, um, well, I guess that's more visitor than. Okay, that, and, uh, did you also say emergency contacts?
Uh, yes, yeah, emergency contacts, I think that would be a good idea.
Oh, okay. Anything else? You'll look into that, Scott. Okay. Brad?
I just wanted to thank Dave for updating this.
I know, it's very helpful, isn't it?
And I appreciate all the effort he does.
I told him it was job security. I told him it was job security by providing this, because. Todd?
Nope.
Vicki?
Um, I just wanted to say about this airport lease, uh, Todd came up with this idea of doing it by footage and I know that Councilman Frye's put a lot of time in on that and I just wanted to thank him for that.
Okay, thank you. Come up with a solution? Of course, it was-
A solution, yeah.
To your benefit though.
Well-
It just happened that way, right, Todd?
Yeah.
Who would have thought?
I meant, I don't want to make myself a point.
Who can you say? Who would have thought?
They're kicking dirt on my compliments.
Denny?
That's right. I don't have anything.
Kevin?
Yes. How much does it cost or would it cost to put a radar detection system in at the 10th Street stoplight for the turn lane?
I can manage, I can get hold of, get easy and see.
I don't know how many times I come up to 10th Street during the day and have to set turn wait, there's nobody in either one of the turn lanes and you have to let it run its full process before you can go.
Oh, so you wanted to skip the left turn lane?
If there's nobody there, we ought to be able to go.
Would a radar system be better than a loop, wire loop, since we're doing the clink and they could have built it in then? I don't know which, are they both options?
I don't think you want, we've got a loop at 14.
Right. So we don't want a loop at 10.
So you just want it so that it doesn't go left turn, turn up that you're-
Yeah, so if there's nobody there, lights green right away and stays green.
Yeah, it'd probably take a while, but I'll, I'll look into it.
That's fine. In keeping with that, is there some way to make that light so the turn lane goes green? There are more accidents have been caused at that intersection because people continue to try and beat that light and they're not thinking that the light goes green on the other side too for people to come straight on. Can that light go turn to yellow to red for three seconds before it goes to full green? Because people go ahead and continue to file that way and they no longer have right away.
You mean, people continue to take the left turn?
Yes. And they no longer-
Well, but actually, if they're past, if they're past the stop line close into the center of the intersection, they still do have right away. Because they've actually, if they're westbound, once they've passed that, that, dubbed the stop block, then they're actually in the intersection, even though it doesn't look like it.
Well, you haven't been there. If you haven't seen people run that, they continue to take it as a green as if they still have right away.